你好
We are reconvening and I'd like to make the following closed session disclosure. By a 4-2-0 vote with Vice Mayor Winn absent and abstaining, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Elgro Police Officers Association versus the City of Elgro as identified by the case number listed on the City Council agenda. We will now adjourn this special meeting at 6:37. And I will now call order the regular Elgro City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 11, 2021, and it is 6:38 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. Consistent with executive orders, N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. Meeting location will be in the City Council chamber, but the chamber will not be open to the public. Just a quick touching base, Mayor, you might want to refresh your video. It's frozen, at least on my side. So, but just to touch base real quick. Continuing on, this meeting of the Elgro City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, August 13 at 1:00 PM, and Saturday, August 14 at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.tv. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElgroCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elgro City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as may be necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed counting down the three-minute time. Callers connecting direct via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star nine. City Clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound for those phone caller participants. Two forty-one minute remains. Otherwise, for our folks in the Zoom environment, you'll see the minute timer or the three-minute timer count down. When the total three minutes time concludes for our phone callers, a series of bells will sound. When we are operating inside of the teleconference environment, part of one of our requirements is for our roll call or any votes that we do, those will be done verbally. And I will be starting out our roll call for tonight's regular meeting, starting with Member Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen. And that'll take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, if we can have everyone right. Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
I'll jump in here just on our scripts. It looks as though I deleted Section 2, but we'll be going on to the approval of the agenda. So we'll be looking at that motion in a second for approval of the agenda under Section 2.
I, Hume, I move the agenda.
Soon, seconds.
With the motion in the second, that roll call vote will proceed, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen. With that, we have an agenda. As part of that agenda for Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda. That will take us into Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is the new hire introductions. And as I pull up a presentation, I will invite our City Manager, Jason Berman, to say a few words, but also just note for folks viewing, though I will have sound share, you might notice a little bit of a change. We don't have musical accompaniment. The PowerPoint presentation, we found that lagged. So, I will turn it over to City Manager Berman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Happy to have this presentation, although I was really looking forward to our meeting last month. We're going to have our new employees come to City Council chambers and be able to introduce them in person, unfortunately, by COVID numbers and us returning to this Zoom environment. We're going to have to do what we've done throughout the pandemic, which is this nice little presentation where at least you can put some of the names with the faces and be able to welcome virtually all of the new members as well as those that have been recently promoted over the last quarter. So with that, go ahead and ask the City Clerk to commence with the presentation. So with that, go ahead and ask the City Clerk to commence with the presentation. Includes the presentation, Mayor. Please join us in welcoming and congratulating all those who have been promoted and newly hired.
All right, congratulations to everyone and welcome to those that are new to the city. Can I see a hand raise? All right, we will move on to our next item.
You did, but it was only because I was trying to find the clapping hands emoji, and that doesn't exist on this platform.
No worries.
That will take us on to section five, general public comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less. Large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the Council or City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that. For our participants in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to use that raise hand function. It looks like we have some folks doing that. For Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, for prior written comments, none were received for general public comment for the regular agenda. But it looks as though we have two individuals, and of course, anyone else that's in the attendee can use that raise hand function or yourself, put yourself in the queue, and I'll pull up that speaker timer now. I think I will pull up that speaker timer. I think I got it turned off on my side. I'm having issues pulling up the timer. Pull those speakers into our environment now.
Mark Graham, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, I live in Elk Grove. Two things I wanted to talk to you about. In response to the city's survey, what to do with the ARPA money, twenty-two million dollars, my recommendation was to reach a book into creating a city-owned community broadband project. Now, other cities have done this, Chattanooga, Tennessee, noteworthy, they've had one going for a long time. But closer to home, the city of Santa Cruz for years had their own city-owned community broadband project. And the advantage of this is that the city could take control of it, provide high-quality, high-speed internet, and access money. Elk Grove has approximately fifty-two thousand households. Now, Santa Cruz is running with an income of fifteen dollars per account, like, or fifteen per connection. Multiply fifteen dollars times fifty-two thousand households in twelve months, that suggests top annual income of about nine-point-three-six million dollars per year, with some upside potential. Now, of course, not every household in the city wants to try to it, but the point is, there's a huge potential there. What I recommend is that the Council set aside some money, allocate, and spend about six months for a feasibility study on this, sort of along the lines of what the city did with the so-called Smart City Plan. I mean, this one will actually be good for the residents, okay? And we can even learn from what other cities have done. There's lots of experience from other cities out there. City-owned community broadband, and then the residents will be thrilled and happy, even during a pandemic, will be at high-speed internet access. The other thing I want to ask the city for help on is this. As you know, the League of California Cities opposed SB five-five-six, which is a bill to, it's a telecommunications bill that would be bad for every city and every person in California. And the city wrote a very nicely-written letter over the mayor's signature that went out to the sponsor of the bill on April fifth or something like that. Now, I'm asking for a little bit more help. I'm working with a group that has hired a lobbyist to lobby the legislature to stop SB five-five-six and a couple of other bills, but the city opposes SB five-five-six. And what would be really helpful is to have a letter from the city that's addressed to the legislature that says that the permitting system for cell antennas is working. It is working now. The telecoms are misrepresented to issue. Crown Castle has said in at least two committee meetings that it currently takes years for a carrier to get a cell antenna permit. We know in Elk Grove that is not true. What I would like to do, I'll send a draft letter to the mayor and the City Attorney. If you would review it, and you can completely rewrite it. But I would like to add something from the city, from the city's perspective, that says, right now, the cell antenna permitting system is working. It does not need to change. There's no emergency point. I really appreciate the city's help on that, and thank you very much.
Done fine. All right, next caller, please. Keep going.
Nicholas Matos, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, hey, Councilwoman, Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yep. Hi, this is Nicholas Matos, and you've been all Matos for ten-three-seven-eight, I'll be your way, Elk Grove, California. We got a vote enforcement letter about moving a fence over on the Nile. And it's a side yard of the house. We put it towards the sidewalk. It's swiveling from the sidewalk, so we're just trying to see if we can get any support on not having to move the fence back, because there's multiple homes in the neighborhood to have the fences extended out towards the sidewalk. And here's my father.
Yeah, today I drove around the, today I drove around the neighborhood, and I took some pictures of, some fences are right on the sidewalk, on the walkway. And I got several pictures here that I took, and they're printed. I could show it to you on the computer, if we could. I don't know if you can or not. And what I'd like to do, Mayor and Vice Mayor, if we could meet over there, so I could drive around the neighborhood very close to our house and show you some things around there. And I took one, there's a stop sign, and they have one right there, about six feet from the stop sign. And it blacks the view. Ours is about thirty feet back from the, because it's a corner house, about thirty feet. And our fence looks much better than these, because it's called the Good Neighbor Fence. And we spent a lot of money building this fence. This was the worst house in the whole neighborhood around there. We're trying to paint it, fix, and clean it up, make it look nice again. And at this time, we don't know what to do, because some neighbors turned us into the city, and it's a big mess.
Just on the fence, there's nothing.
Yeah, just the fence.
So. Tell them about you, you talked with.
Yeah, I went down to the city yesterday, and I spoke to the Gemma Code Enforcement downstairs. He might have some notes. He said he was going to write some notes, too. And the other day, I went to the city, too, and I spoke to someone there and asked for the supervisor to call me, but they never had called me back. What I'd like to do, the main thing, is if I could meet with the mayor and the, and the, see a council member that represents the area, so I can show them the house around there, so they know we're talking. Through the phone, it's very hard to see you. I appreciate your help. I know the time is almost three seconds. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for calling. Please send me an email and the Vice Mayor will try to follow up, but we can't respond here during public comment, but thank you for calling.
All right. Appreciate it.
Next caller?
Provide that opportunity to our members of the participating audience. Use that raise hand function if you wish to be called forward for general public comment. Otherwise, we will be moving on in the agenda. And at this time, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I do not see any further raised hands for general.
All right, next item.
It'll take us to sections, general administration information.
All right, greetings again. I'd be with you. Jason Bearman, City Manager. Several items to report on this evening. First, I want to congratulate our Public Works team and city as a whole on outstanding projects, based on recognition. Lot of award-winning projects that are grand opening for Old Town Plaza, and for that, a lot of other things. Some of these things are getting recognition. So first, I want to, I want to mention two projects that have earned Project of the Year awards from the American Public Works Association Sacramento Chapter. That's the center, that's our community center at District Fifty-Six, has been recognized as two thousand twenty-one Project of the Year in the Structures category. And King and Carr Park, partnership between the city and the CSD, received the same honor in the Parks and Trails category. Three other projects earned awards from the American Society of Civil Engineers Sacramento Chapter, which is the construction of the roadways at Tilby and Big Horn, recognized as the Outstanding Road and Highway Project of the Year. Our Elk Grove Animal Shelter was selected for Outstanding Urban or Land Development Project of the Year. And the Lower Laguna Creek Open Space Preserve Trail Project is being recognized as an Parks Recreation Project of the Year. Lot of great recognition, a lot of hard work. I have many involved in the organization who want to make sure they're recognized for their outstanding work. Coffee with the cop. Grab a cup and get to know Elk Grove police officers and learn more about programs and prevention tactics to keep our community safe. One of two upcoming Coffee with the Cop sessions scheduled first next Tuesday, August seventeenth, from nine to eleven-thirty, or Scotty Coffee, at twenty-four-seventy-five Elk Grove Boulevard, or five to seven-thirty at the Old Town Plaza, nine-six-one-five Railroad Street. San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission is hosting a virtual community open house on Thursday, August twenty-sixth, five-thirty P. M. By details, generate feedback on a proposed Elk Grove station. Station will be part of a planned passenger rail service between Stockton and Sacramento. Elk Grove Station is one of six proposed stations. Community members can review and comment on the notice of preparation. Initial study for the project's website is www.SJRRC.com/ElkGroveStation. Public Works Department provide an overview of the proposed widening of Grantline Road from Bond Road to Calvine Road during a community workshop, scheduled on Tuesday, August thirty-first, at six P. M. at the Aggie County Vineyards. Road, respondents will have a chance to do alternatives and ask questions during the meeting. I think at the last council meeting, Councilmember Spees asked a question about the upcoming potential workshops or meetings in districts relating to homelessness and affordable housing. I provide an update on that item for Council at the community tonight. Staff's been working together and planning some workshops since September and October. In partnership with the CSD, we'll be holding a series of community meetings on affordable housing and homelessness. Staff will include Housing and Public Services, Police Department, Code Enforcement, and CSD Parks Recreation Department. It will be a panel discussion on policies and practices related to these issues and opportunities for Q and A. Meeting locations will be determined later in the month as we continue to monitor COVID-related public health conditions on the viability of in-person meetings. However, regardless of whether they're in-person or virtual meetings, we're proposing the following schedule. Meetings will start at six P. M. at District One, Tuesday, September fourteenth. District Two, September twenty-eighth. District Three, October fifth. And District Four, October nineteenth. So please stay tuned for more information and details as we move forward with those planning efforts. And also, an update on the city's ongoing sustainability efforts. As part of our commitment to sustainability, the city has officially eliminated the purchase of single-use plastic water bottles. As part of the change, the city's installed bottle filling stations in all city facilities and provided insulated reusable bottles for all city staff. For visitors at City Hall, biodegradable cups are now available. Water monsters or five-gallon water dispensers will also be available at city events to refill the reusable bottles. This change will result in an estimated twenty thousand dollars in cost savings for the city, as well as the impact to our natural environment. Also a reminder, this month is Diversity Month, and our Diversity and Inclusion Commission is offering a variety of events and activities throughout the month of August. Cultural entertainment is scheduled every Thursday at the Never Good Market, District Fifty-Six. Friday's cooking workshop is already sold out. Next week will include two free children's art workshops and an art show. Event series presented in partnership with Kaiser Perpetual and other local sponsors. Please see the city's website for more detail. Also, comments on the public draft of the South American Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan are being accepted until five o'clock next Wednesday, August eighteenth. More information, view a copy of the plan, is SASBgroundwater.org. And finally, applications are currently being accepted for several openings on the Chief's Community Advisory Board. The cab is intended to provide a forum for discussing community concerns, and the goal is to have a broad spectrum of viewpoints representing board members collaboratively with the police chief, members of the police department on community police strategies, police community relations, increasing public awareness regarding policy issues and other important concerns for it. Visit the police department's website to learn more or to apply. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman, for that thorough report. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Raise your hand. Don't see hands raised. I will go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you for your report, sir.
That will take us to section seven, consent calendar items.
All right, I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be that opportunity for using the raise hand function for public comment on the consent calendar items. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I just wanted to confirm that there were no written comments submitted prior to the meeting under general, under the consent calendar items. And using that opportunity just to review our list of attendees. I do not see any raised hand functions for consent calendar. That's going to conclude that public comment opportunity.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, move consent item.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
With the motion in a second, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Consent calendar items will pass 5:00.
All right, moving right along. Next item.
I'll move us into Section 8, our public hearings, starting with Item 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider an appeal of planning commission project approval for a major design review, conditional use permit, special parking permit and tree removal permit for the Kubota Tractor Corporation.
All right, we have Antonio Pito.
Staff are just pulling up the presentation at this time.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the Elk Grove City Planning Commission, Antonio Ablog, City Manager, here to bring you.
Mr. Ablog, if I can just interrupt a little bit, your audio is coming through rather faint, so you might just want to adjust some of your levels on your end. Thank you. Might just be proximity to your device as well.
Can you hear me now?
You're coming in, that's coming in much better. Please proceed.
So I'll begin with a basic description of the project and walk the council through the project and for anybody else that's during the meeting tonight, some information about what the project is and get into the recommendation for council tonight. As far as the project itself, it involves a major designer view for a new building of approximately 632,000 square feet and associated site improvement. A conditional use permit to allow a manufacturing minor use, a special parking permit for a reduction in the number of required parking spaces from 1,281 to 292, and a tree removal permit to remove sixteen trees of local importance. On the screen before you, you can see the location of the project site on the south side of Grantline Road, proximate to the intersection of water. The site is within the newly annexed Southeast Industrial Area. You can see the site before you. That annexation area includes a number of properties. Most of those were designated for light industrial uses, although there are some heavy industrial and regional commercial sites within that annex. As far as the proposed site plan, as I mentioned before, they will, the Kubota project is requesting the construction of a 632,000 square foot manufacturing assembly building. The project site will include the thirty-two-and-a-half acre building site plus seven-plus acre detention base. On Grantline Road, the project will have a right-in, right-out driveway access. And on Waterman Road, there will be a Waterman Road extension that will access from that Waterman Road. As far as the building itself, the new building will mostly be dedicated to the manufacturing and assembly of Kubota commercial equipment. It will also include some office uses and will include Kubota University, which will give Kubota the opportunity to train Kubota associates onsite for use and operation of equipment. And for the loading and unloading of materials and equipment, the proposed building includes forty-two dock. To accommodate their operating. You can see the architecture of the proposed building before you. Staff believes that they provided an enhanced industrial architecture. We believe that it will fit the site well and they've gone above and beyond for an industrial building to provide a well-designed building that will provide a cornerstone for our new south side. The applicant is also requesting a special parking permit. Based on our current parking standards for manufacturing use, the total parking required for the facility would be 1,263 spaces for the manufacturing use plus eighteen spaces for the remaining uses on the site, a total of 1,281 spaces. Based on Kubota's review of their operations, including how their existing facility locate, their existing facility located in Lodi Performance, they've requested a parking reduction, but will be providing 292 parking stalls onsite, plus 107 trailer parking stalls for a total just under 400 spaces. While this is below the 1,281 parking spaces required, the proposed facility will manufacture large commercial industrial machinery, requiring a large open assembly floor. Furthermore, associate start times will be staggered such that no more than thirty associates will arrive at any given start time and no more than 100 will arrive during peak hours because of the unique nature of their manufacturing operations. Staff feels that this parking reduction justified and the planning commission with that agreement. Regarding tree removals, there will be sixteen trees of local importance requested to be removed with this project. A large number of those trees lay in the center of the property and based on Kubota's proposed operations and feasible to design the proposed manufacturing building around those. And in turn, based on those tree removals, the applicant is proposing to replant seventy-four oak trees on the site, part of the onsite improvement committee for the loss. The Planning Commission reviewed the application at its July 15, 2021 meeting. Written verbal, written and verbal comments were provided by Kevin Carmichael, the law firm Adams-Broadwell-Joseph Cardozo, speaking on behalf of Sacramento County Res. Also referred to as RRD. RRD contended that Southeast Industrial's supplemental environmental impact report did not address potential project impacts and that subsequent or supplemental failure appeared. Planning Commission took into consideration all the information presented, including those written and verbal comments, and ultimately voted 5-0 to approve the project. On July 26, 2021, an appeal of the Planning Commission's project approval was submitted by Kevin Carmichael on behalf of RRD. The grounds for appeal are outlined in the staff report and I'll briefly go through those for you. First, environmental review failed to study the air quality and public health impact. Two, that the project will result in potentially significant greenhouse gas emissions. Three, that the project will cause significant unmitigated impacts from heavy-duty truck traffic. And four, the Planning Commission's staff report findings were based on erroneous air quality. The responses to those grounds for appeal are also in the staff report, but I'll briefly summarize those responses for you. As far as the grounds for appeal, the first three items are mainly focused on air quality. And to that, I want to mention that City Council certified the SAR for the Southeast Industrial Area Specific Plan on January 27, 2021. The SDIR specifically evaluated development on the subject parcel with light industrial uses. Kubota's, Kubota Project's land use is consistent with those uses allowed in specific plans. Furthermore, the proposed facility is more than 500 feet from the nearest existing sensitive sectors. And also, information from the project applicant indicates that there will be approximately 38.5 daily truck trip to the site and from the site based on Kubota's distance. Furthermore, regarding greenhouse gas emissions and air quality, the project is required to comply with the city's climate action plan, which is the city's strategic plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And furthermore, the project is required to comply with the mitigation plan adopted with the certified SDIR, including all the air quality emissions and related mitigation. Provided the table on the screen, which enumerates some of those air quality mitigations, although there are a number of other mitigations related to the project, the ones before you on the screen are specifically to mitigate emissions. And finally, RRD contends the Planning Commission's staff report and findings were based on erroneous air quality data. And staff would note that air quality data was updated to address the noted deficiencies and the updated analysis did not alter staff's determination that certified SDIR adequately addressed any potential environmental impact from the Kubota. So based on its analysis, staff has determined that no further environmental review is necessary under CEQA, pursuant to State Public Guidelines Section 1518 and CEQA Section 1512. Southeast Industrial SCR analyzed the development of the site with light industrial uses. The project as proposed is consistent with those land uses and is within the general plans for area ratio, which max, which the maximum for area ratio is 1.5 and the proposed for area ratio is 0.32, falling well below the buildout. And furthermore, staff has determined the Southeast Industrial Specific Plan, SDIR, adequately addressed any potential environmental impact from Kubota facility and no further environmental. With that, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution denying the appeal and affirming the Planning Commission's approval, approving the major designer view, the conditional use permit, special parking permit and tree removal. That concludes my presentation and staff is available.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ablog. I will now declare that the public hearing is now open. I would like to invite the applicant to speak. Do we have the applicant available?
Madam Mayor, this is Jerry.
Welcome, Mr. Berman.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Jerry Camillus, representing the project this evening. And first of all, about in the Kubota team, really appreciate all the efforts made by staff and by the city to continue this journey, hopefully towards groundbreaking soon on this project. This project in this particular facility, just as the facility in Lodi currently serves Kubota's dealers, almost 150 strong, basically from the Rockies west. So this is a special opportunity to be able to keep a company here in California and, and not look at alternative sites. And we were able to keep working with closely with Kubota over the last two and a half years, keep Kubota along the 99th corridor. And this is, this is Elk Grove is a, is an ideal site, site in California for this facility. The, we've reviewed the appellant's submittal as well as we've reviewed the appellant's letter this afternoon. Four o'clock this afternoon and we reviewed it extensively with our team. The appellant and its experts do not understand the project as it was defined in the staff report and our application. With regards to heavy truck trip, the operations per truck is not expected to change when Kubota moves to the Elk Grove facility. The thirty-eight-and-a-half trips per day estimate is based on Kubota's current experience with workdays and that, that can include up to six days a week. In fact, the thirty-eight-and-a-half trip per day is conservative number in that some truck trips are both delivery and distribution. Our data assumed one truck, one truck, two trip. Regardless, the trips in all, in all events are less than 100 trips per day as referenced in the EIR. The appellant's consultant used a factor of 1.04 trips per square foot. Now, this, this particular factor is used for fulfillment centers for e-commerce purposes. And this would result in a truck trip per day ranging between 657 and 729 truck trips per day. Obviously, his analysis was overstays the Kubota Project's impact as Kubota Tractor's 632,000 square foot distribution center has only 38 truck trips per day. With regards to the comments on unlimited sample size, Dr. Clark is just plain wrong. Kubota's activity has not declined during the pandemic and thus the staff recommendations representations are correct. The first half of this year has resulted in a higher truck count for whole goods than the prior four-year due to the record industry demand and Kubota sales numbers. We have, we have confidence our sample size is not shorting our, our historic average. It is a fair representation of future truck trips if the industry were to maintain this high demand. Building size, with respect to the building size, the 632,000 square foot project is a consolidation of three locations currently in Lodi. That's for Kubota equipment. If, if there's, there's not expected to be any net increase in size or production in the facility over the present location. With regards to heavy equipment onsite, our calculation was based on two trips per truck. It is the total truck per month divided by the days of that month. Keep in mind that Kubota does work Saturdays and adding, and that adds to the truck count that was considered. The assumption by Dr. Clark would exclude Saturday's work and, and even, even so, still falls well below 100 trips per day as, as indicated in the EIR. Building size doesn't justify an increase in output. The, the physical increase in the building size will allow us pull our existing parts operation to one single space, proving efficiency as well as getting whole good items under one roof, which are currently sitting outside today. To all this, our volume of business is not expected to change as we support our established network. The reassembly, reassembled product is largely handled via propane and electric forklift route out the facility. The engines are not run until, until the final staging to the dock lanes, which is less than a couple hundred feet. So we, we agree with the staff report. In addition, one, one last note. A letter presented by the applicant this afternoon had another glaring. A letter presented by the applicant this afternoon had another glaring error. This letter mentions Triangle Point project on page four. Well, I am the developer of Triangle Point and there are not three hundred units of multifamily approved on the property. There are ninety two single family homes planned in the Triangle Point project. But no multifamily whatsoever. In fact, as, as the developer of Triangle Point, we are certainly aware of the Kubota project and on behalf of the Triangle Point project across the street from Kubota. We fully support the Kubota project. The city has the opportunity to make a highly respected international company, a new corporate citizen of this community with great jobs, great culture of the city. We hope that this, that a series of false factual environmental allegations made for an alternative purpose do not dissuade you from supporting this high quality project and, and the benefits it will bring to Elk Grove. So we ask you this evening that you follow the staff's recommendation, deny the appeal and, and, and honor the unanimous direction by your planning commission to approve the project. Good evening, and I have, I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Camillus. I will invite the appellant to speak as well. Do we have any representative representing the appellant?
Before we go too far, Mayor, I just did want to know, there was a name that I recognized from the list that staff had provided, Mr. Kyle Hagan. And he does have his hand raised as part of the applicant team. I just wanted to make sure. And I think he lowered his hand, so I will, we can continue as you direct, Mayor, or to go to the appellant.
Okay, I, if the hand is down, we will go on to the appellant. So anybody participating this evening representing the appellant wish to speak?
Yes. Thank you. Well, good evening, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, council members and staff. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Kevin Carmichael. I am an attorney with Adams Broadwell Joseph and Cardozo. I am here on behalf of Sacramento County Residence for Responsible Development. Now, residence is an unincorporated association of individuals and labor organizations, including Elk Grove and Sacramento area residents. And residents support sustainable development projects that comply with environmental and health safety laws. Residents filed this appeal because the city has not complied with CEQA's requirements to fully disclose and mitigate the Kubota project's environmental and public health impact. The members of residents would be adversely affected by the unmitigated environmental and public health impact associated with project development and operation. Therefore, we respectfully request that the city council grant this appeal and remand the project staff prepare a legally adequate subsequent EIR project which fully discloses and mitigates the project's site-specific environmental impact before moving forward with development. As briefed in our comments submitted today, the staff report relies on unclear and largely unsupported data to justify the assertion that the project will not result in a significant increase in heavy truck traffic. Additionally, the city has not prepared a health risk assessment with air dispersion modeling to determine if this increased heavy truck traffic will pose a health risk to local residents and nearby existing and planned residential community. And without this, the city cannot determine if additional mitigation measures to protect the families that live in this area are needed. As Antonio stated, section one five one six eight of the CEQA guidelines require a lead agency to review the results of a prior program level EIR, such as the specific plan SEIR relied upon here in order to determine if all of the potential environmental impact projects were analyzed under the prior EIR. Additionally, Public Resources Code section two one one six six requires a lead agency prepare a subsequent environmental impact report where a substantial change in the project's circumstances would cause new and significant impact or where new information demonstrates that the project has new or more significant environmental impacts than previously analyzed. Both circumstances exist here. First, our appeal explains that the city failed to accurately analyze the project's operational truck trips in either the SEIR or the one five one six eight review prepared for this project. The staff report for this hearing dismisses our experts' findings that the project will introduce hundreds of heavy truck trips to the area and relies on the applicant's unsupported assertion that the project's site will only introduce thirty eight trucks per day. As is currently the case for a Lowdi facility. Our air quality consultant demonstrates in his comments that the applicant's trip estimates for the Lowdi facility are not applicable to the project. Dr. Clark also explains that trips are underestimated because they're based on a very limited set of data collected during produced operation during COVID nineteen. It defies logic to conclude that a facility three and a half times larger than their existing facility will not result in a commensurate increase in truck traffic during normal operation. We're talking about a facility that has one hundred and seven trailer parking stalls and forty two dock doors. And, and if, if each truck visiting the site is counted twice, you know, two trip. It, it doesn't make sense to, to move into such a large building and, and not utilize it to its fullest. And furthermore, we believe that the city must prepare an updated trip analysis that relies on accurate, supportable trip estimate. Second, while the SEIR analyzed light industrial use of the project site, it did not conduct a full analysis of this instant project as it was not known to the city at the time of certification of the SAR. The SEIR recognized that future analysis would be necessary. The SEIR required the city to conduct study of localized toxic area air contamination resulting from future development. And that is baked into the mitigation measure of three point four three B that Antonio put up on the screen earlier. The, the city has not conducted the studies that are called for in the SEIR's mitigation measures that you approved. And therefore lacks substantial evidence to support the required finding that the residents over five hundred feet away from the project site will not be exposed to elevated levels of cancer-causing air contaminants. CEQA requires lead agencies to analyze the health risks caused by human exposure for the project's toxic air emission. Residents' appeal here explained that the city failed to perform this analysis in either the SEIR or the one five one eight review. And this is a clear violation of CEQA. And it falls on the city as the lead agency to uphold the commitment it made to the community in the SEIR and comply with its duties under CEQA to perform the necessary studies to show that the community is being protected. The city cannot rely on the SEIR and the one five one six eight review to address the new significant effects that will result from the project and must prepare subsequent EIR to address these issues before the city can approve the project. Therefore, we strongly urge the council to continue this hearing to a later date in order to fully consider our comments and to remand the project to staff to prepare a legally adequate subsequent EIR before bringing the project back for public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your response. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
And at this time, this is for item eight point one, this would be when our members of the public, so not the applicants or appellants, but that are members of the public that are here for participating in item eight point one, to use the raise hand function in order to queue up to be called forward while we're have, and I do have some folks that have already jumped into the queue, that's great. But just for the mayor, vice mayor, and council member, there were two written comments that were received on this item. I think it was a written comment from each the applicant and the appellant. And without further ado, I will pull up speaker timer so that we can start pulling in our members.
Keith Jones, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. It looks like you're still on mute. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
Good now?
Yes, go right ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. Again, my name is Keith Jones. I represent George Reed. We are a grading, paving, and concrete contractor that has been selected to perform work at this project. I am the private works manager for George Reed. And I want to let you know that we are, support this project and we support the recommendation, deny the appeal. We are also a union contractor and are signatory to the operators local three, laborers local eleven thirty, seven seventy three, one eighty five, and the cement masons local three hundred. So this particular project not only can provide jobs for your community, can provide good paying jobs to trucking workers that will be on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Can we get our next caller, please?
Scott Powell, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and the rest of the Elk Grove City Council. My name is Scott Powell. I'm the executive vice president of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. I'm here today to encourage you to deny the, this appeal, but first want to thank the city of Elk Grove for its continued support to create a dynamic regional economic ecosystem. And also to recognize your economic development staff for their efforts to bring tradable sector jobs that will ensure that this region isn't the last to recover like it was from the Great Recession. Kubota Tractor will not only anchor a new industrial, will bring substantial investment of tens of millions of dollars to the city of Elk Grove from a large Japanese manufacturer, foreign direct investment like this is key to recovering the over forty thousand jobs still absent for our regional economy. With only twenty three percent of the Elk Grove residents living and working in the community, jobs closer where people live is one of the smartest things we can do to combat climate change. This facility will serve the entire Western U.S. and could have been located anywhere from Nevada, Arizona, to Montana. If Kubota did locate in one of these states, what would the climate impact be to transporting tractors and farm equipment to the largest and most productive agricultural region in the United States? Planning staff has done yeoman's efforts to show that this appeal should be not, should be denied. I urge the council to deny this appeal and support growing the regional economy for the betterment of citizens of Elk Grove and for all in the region. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. We will go on to our next caller.
Noah Painter, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Noah Painter. My comments speaking will be brief. I'm here on behalf of the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers Local Three Forty. And we're requesting that you continue the site for up to thirty days to allow for further dialogue with representatives from Kubota, developer, and city staff. We have serious concerns about the process which this project dropped for you this evening, rushed environmental, rushed environmental review, little to no public outreach, and potential issues around the acquisition evaluation process. City staff and the Camillus companies appear to have rushed this process in hopes to keep Kubota here. It would be prudent for the council to allow for thirty days at most further conversations amongst all partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Painter. Next caller, please.
Mark Graham, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council and staff. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. All right, first thing is, is I read, or listened to and watched Mr. Ablog's presentation of the grounds for the appeal staff, staff's response, it didn't really seem like the staff's response was responsive. I mean, you, you saw, you have it in writing before you, specific sections, arguments that the, sorry, that the appeal, the appellant's made. And it seems like city staff's response was, well, we're required to comply with this, we're required to comply with that, that, and other. And, and, and I don't see a point for point direct response. In other words, you have a, here's you have a non-responsive response, and I think that's not a viable ground for denying the appeal. Next thing is, I didn't know until just now from the workers' union that, that apparently this project has been rushed. And I totally support what they recommended, pause the project for thirty days for continued dialogue. There should be a lot of outreach to local residents. This is one of the weaknesses of this city. I don't know how long this has been going on, but at least several years. When there's a project, you know, that will affect local residents, and it says in the staff report that there are, there are residents in five hundred feet of them. The city needs to do direct outreach for those local residents. Tell them in terms that they understand and with sufficient detail and clarity, what is being proposed and how it might affect them and give them an opportunity for input. The city likes to short circuit stuff like this, and it appears you've done it again here. The next thing, you know, the comments about economic growth. The, the, the jobs that are created during the construction of the project are always fleeting. They last a year, a year and a half, maybe maximum, and then they're gone. I hope the city is not fooled by that. At the extent it provides any economic incentive to the city, that would be some deep long-term ongoing operations of whatever happens at this Kubota. And so on that score, I know we're not talking about, I don't know if this was mentioned in the appeal, but I'm mentioning it now. Often, the city will give tax breaks and other financial incentives to encourage a company to come and build somewhere in the city. And that's the sweetener, but that has the effect of, of reducing the benefits, the economic benefits that there otherwise might be for the city. In other words, it costs the city money. Or if you look at a project that, without all these tax breaks and incentives, might bring in five million dollars, the tax is actually going to bring in about one or one and a half million. The city's giving it all away. I hope the city's not doing that in this project. I urge you to uphold the appeal and induce an actual responsive response to the appeal, the arguments that they made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next caller, please.
Scott Smith, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you for your time today, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Scott Smith. I am the Director of Business Development at Platinum Pipeline, who has been awarded the white utility scope on this project. I am speaking in support of the project. We are a union shop representing workers from the operating engineer, operating engineers, meaning local three, laborers, international, and local three oh four. Our company and our employees are excited about the opportunity, and we have provided a letter to go into the record our support. Support, staff recommendation, I feel. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, next caller, please.
And looking over our list of attendees, we do not see any further raised hand functions being activated, so that will conclude public comment for item eight point one.
All right, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and I will invite back the appellant. If you wish to provide some additional comments or closing remarks. This would be for the appellant.
Right, nothing further, nothing further at this time. I am available for any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. At this time, I will go ahead and invite the applicant to provide additional comments or closing remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that this, this particular project in, of Kubota has been something, a project that has been on its drawing boards for almost a decade. It had gone through an extensive search over course of years. And, and now it's been engaged in a process patiently waiting for the annexation to be completed and, and be able to move forward with the formal application process and going through all the steps in both, both analytical, policy, and transparency. And, and certainly this project's been around and noted for, for some time. Also, Kubota is not asking for any subsidies or any, any contributions from the city. This is, this is a project that's fully funded by Kubota and, and it's, it's, it's a self, self-funding project. So just wanted to make sure that's clear in the, and I also understand in the, in the packet, there's a letter of support from Union Local One Eighteen, and that's the ironworkers union. So thank you this evening, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Camillos. At this time, I will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And before I turn it over to council, Mr. Ablog, based on comments made by the applicant and the appellant, is there any additional information based on what you've heard you would like to share with council before we go on to council deliberations?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Based on the information provided by the applicant and appellants and public speakers, staff believes we've addressed the items that have come up in the staff report. But should any questions come up, staff is available to answer those, and we still believe that our environmental analysis was sufficient and do recommend that the city council affirm Planning Commission's approval of the project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ablog. I will go ahead and start council comments. Any additional questions with Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Antonio, I just have a quick comment, given that this, the sort of tracks of this appeal, based on the environmental analysis, it has to do with truck traffic and trips, you know, obviously, I assume that both the Southeast Industrial Area, SEIR that's been certified, as well as the EIR document done for the project, assumed a certain number of truck trips. I've heard 38.5 used. What is the maximum number of truck trips that had been assumed previous?
Don't have that number offhand. Maybe as we go through questions, we could bring that up and get back to you. But I, I do know that the number of truck trips from Kubota, based on their operations and their analysis of their load I facility, fall within the number of truck trips that was analyzed as part of the SDIR.
Okay. Okay. And then my second question is, you mentioned that there was some discrepancy in the environmental document, that that language had been rectified. Did that happen before or after the planning?
That happened just before the Planning Commission meeting. Those numbers were, that rectified information was provided to the Planning Commission in advance of them making their decision.
So they knew it at the time they made their decision? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you. No more questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hume. Councilmember Sim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to also thank staff and Kubota for their, and Mr. Camillo's for their interest in our city and, and willingness to locate here. I think it's going to be a big success here for the city. I, I'm not a CEQA attorney, but I'm, I'm trusting in our staff and what they're, what they've advised in the staff report, and that it meets the criteria. I will say that I am, you know, pleased to see Kubota, from what I understand in the calls that have called in, there's, there seem to be employing union labor, and from what I understand, over half of it is, is union labor. However, I know there's, there's maybe some more discussions to be had, and I would just encourage Kubota to meet with other parties and just have conversations at the very least, and see if there's a compromise that can't be reached. But from a CEQA perspective and from just the, the potential that this has, I think, for, for the city, I'm, I'm very encouraged, and I look forward to, to progressing this project forward. So I look forward to hearing more from my colleagues, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spies.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I can be pretty short with this. Look, I, this project is a win for Elk Grove and frankly, California. It's, it's great for a diverse mix of our workforce, both union and non-union. It's responsible for our environment. I support the recommendation of staff and the Planning Commission, and I respectfully move staff's recommendation to deny the appeal from the Planning Commission approval and approve the major design review, conditional use permit, special parking permit, entry removal permit for the Kubota truck.
All right, thank you, sir. We do have a motion, but I will continue on with deliberations and go to Vice Mayor Wynn.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for that report. Mr. Ablog, I just have a few questions. I know that Councilmember Hume asked about the truck trips, and one of the things I heard was that some of this is based off of COVID times. I know you said you were, you were not quite certain about the 35 or 38.5 trips, and I keep hearing that number. Is that before, based off of before COVID times? And do we have any numbers pre-COVID for those?
So just to, just for some additional information on those truck trips, we pulled some, we have been able to pull some information from the EIR. The applicant states that their facility will generate 38.5 truck trips. That information from them, as you heard earlier, though it was during COVID times, the applicant states that the COVID did not affect their operations during that time to lessen them. And that 38.5 truck, heavy truck trips is a very small amount of the truck trips that we analyze as part of the EIR. As part of the EIR for light industrial uses for the full industrial area, it was anticipated approximately 3,800 truck trips per day. And this project, as far as light industrial uses, I believe it's about a quarter of that. So if you take a quarter of that 3,800 anticipated for this site, it's still well above the 38.5 that, that Kubota anticipates during their operations.
The other thing that Mr. Kevin Carmichael mentioned were the public health impact, and one of the things he talked about was the health risk and the assessment. Was there something that was pre-completed as well, too?
So the, the toxic air emissions were analyzed as part of the SEIR. What the SEIR did was, based on the, the general emissions found during the SEIR process, it did recommend some mitigation that, that should a specific use come along, that the city, in conjunction with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality District, thought would generate toxic air emissions, then it would kick in further additional studies. One of those thresholds for triggering that additional air quality work is that 100 truck trips, and as you've heard, and have, as we, and as we've been talking about, Kubota proposed to generate under the 100 truck trips. Therefore, based on our review, that, that additional health risk analysis was not warranted.
And so that health risk assessment was based off of just our review, city's review, in-house review, not by any?
In conjunction with a review from the Air Quality District.
And then, one of the things that I, I heard was that there wasn't any outreach, especially around those that were within 500 feet of the project, to get some community input. Can you speak on that, both you?
As far as the project, we followed our standard noticing procedure on this. We have had the site, site posted since it was, the application was made, and we did, our normal procedure requires project noticing to five, a distance of 500 feet. But since there's a large number of agricultural properties, we had to go out a little further to capture enough properties to be noticed. And from those notices, we did not receive any feedback from any property owners within that, that noticing radius.
And then, Mayor, if I can ask Mr. Kevin Carmichael, if we can bring him back on. Mr. Ablog talked about some health risk assessment that was completed. I just wanted to know if he was aware of that, if he could speak to that.
Yep.
Yeah. In our review, we did not see a health risk assessment completed. Health risk assessments are, are done based on air dispersion models using the M-FAC platform, not L-E-E mod, which is what the air modeling in this, in the SDIR was based off of. So it, it would have been impossible to complete a health risk assessment for a specific project because a health risk assessment measures diesel particulate matter and toxic air contaminant drift from a localized source. It takes into account wind direction and proximity to the source of diesel particulate matter, and none of that was known at the time certification of the SDIR. So while the city did complete air modeling for the entire industrial area, it, it did not complete a health risk assessment for this proposed project, as it couldn't have. And all, you know, we're asking that the city make good on the promise to conduct a health risk assessment that is inside of the mitigation measures that this city council approved for the Southeast Industrial Area.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. So since Councilmember Spies made a motion, I do want to say my piece, and that is that Mr. Camillo said things about this, continuing this journey, and that I totally believe, and I'm very supportive of this project. I believe that Kubota is going to bring great jobs into our city. I want Kubota here. I think Kubota is going to be a game changer for our city. That being said, what I heard from Mr. Carmichael and others is making sure that we do a thorough environmental look on this. We had a time in which this is a pandemic, and the community's health is most important and should be our top priority. A health risk assessment and completing them even more so now, and what Mr. Carmichael said is something that is most important to me. I believe that this project should move forward, but I also believe that we need to do our diligence and definitely do a more thorough environment. I, I appreciate staff, what they brought, our attorney and our team and our officer, but I do believe that there needs to be some more work that needs to be done on this. I heard that there needs to be an opportunity for more conversations to be had, and I support that. And so I would like to continue it for another 30 days so that we can have more discussions.
All right, we have an active motion that we need to address before we can go to a second motion. So I will continue on with deliberations, provide my feedback, and then we can roll call for motion one. First and foremost, thank you for the presentation, both from staff, the applicant, and the appellant. Excellent information. Kubota is too important to our city and our region. And the idea of having a multinational company here sends a powerful message everywhere, not only California, but to the world, that Elk Grove is open for business. We want to be a welcoming community for businesses to invest their dollars. That will, in the long run, help our working families and really lift our community and create a thriving business center here for our, for our great city. So I applaud Kubota in looking to our city for your investment. Again, this is just a tremendous asset that I really appreciate. And then I also wanted to recognize and thank both the applicant and the appellant, as I stated earlier. I, I have heard both sides, but I also look to our staff. Staff are our experts, if you will, on providing the information that we need to make the right decisions for our city. And I never want to second-guess our staff because that's what we hire you to do. And, and so I have great faith and trust. Mr. Ablog, I would like to ask you a quick question.
Yes.
Do you believe you've done your due diligence, and we have sufficient information as a, as a governing body as it relates to a sufficient EIR?
Yes, we, we believe we've, we've analyzed the project thoroughly against the SEIR that was certified, and we believe the project and the mitigations that are required of it will address any environmental impact that, that the project potentially may have.
So outside of the appellant, did we, did we receive any opposition?
No.
Okay. And in terms of outreach, gave us a brief summary. So the outreach included not only the Planning Commission, but prior city council meeting, this meeting, media. What other outreach? There, there was the notice. Is there anything that I missed?
As part of the overall annexation process, this was, this, this did go through the public hearing process to annex the, the site into the city as light industrial. So it was anticipated as, as part of that process that this would be a use similar to what Kubota is proposing tonight.
Okay. And then, as it relates to the green sheet, from Mr., I don't even want to butcher the last name from the appellant. I don't want to say the wrong last name. Was there anything in the green sheet that was provided that you think we need additional time to respond, or do you feel confident in the staff report that you provided and addressed those four different points that were raised in the initial letter for the Planning Commission? You provided a thorough staff report. Is there anything you think that is missing in that staff report that may have been addressed in that green sheet provided from the appellant?
As far as from a planning standpoint, we believe we've, we've covered all the necessary items in the staff report, but if there's any other staff that has any additions, I'd, I'd be happy for, for them to point that out to the commission, but planning staff is confident that we've addressed everything.
Okay. That's very helpful. And then, let's see, so I went through the staff report thoroughly, and so I didn't, I don't see any red flags in there that have caused me any concerns. I do want to recognize and applaud, like Councilmember Sim mentioned earlier, for the amount of union contracts that have been awarded. That's just great news. I think it's somewhere in the 56% is what I've heard from the applicant. I did have an opportunity to meet with the applicant and some members of, representing the appellant. So, and this is very important to me. I understand the concern raised by, by the appellant. And this is where you still have an opportunity to continue dialogue. And I really urge the party to continue having conversations and getting to a place that, that you can work together. And that really is going to happen through communication, and I'm happy to help facilitate any additional dialogue that might be necessary. But this project is too important for our city, and to the extent that we, we may need to continue dialogue between applicant and, and appellant, I encourage those, I support those, and again, I will help facilitate any conversations. But we, you know, Kubota is very important to our city. So I will second the motion that's on the table. I see, Mr. Hume, you, would you like to provide additional comments?
I, I would, because I, I didn't, I missed the part about deliberations, so I just asked my question to staff earlier.
Oh, yeah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, one last question, though. Antonio, I got to assume that at least the supplemental EIR, the, the SEIR from the industrial area for the annexation was routed to AQMD, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And then was the, the environmental done for this project also routed, or was that not required?
Yes, the, the analysis of the project in comparison to that SEIR was, was routed to AQMD and commented on by, or, and discussed with AQMD with no, no concerns raised about any health risk assessment or lack thereof.
So to the mayor's point, then, we are relying on expertise of those whose job it is to, to be the watchdog agencies for these issues. But I want to go back to something that the maker of the motion said, that I, I firmly believe. And first of all, I don't understand the nexus that's being present between union labor and air quality, but this is a catalyst for economic development for an area that we have been cultivating for a long time. And so, you know, if you're arguing over how to butcher the cow, you're missing out on the prospect of milk for a long time. And I just, I, I, I think that the fact that Kubota wants to stay in California, wants to stay in the region, wants to be in Elk Grove, bodes well for a lot of work in Elk Grove for the foreseeable future and for, for California. And to the extent we set a bar and then throw a roadblock saying, well, you didn't meet the bar well enough, there's not going to be anyone left that wants to do business here. They will go to Idaho, they will go to Nevada, they will go to Texas, they will go where- They will go to Idaho, they will go to Nevada, they will go to Texas, they will go wherever they can be, that they don't have to put up, frankly, with the baloney. And so I support this project, I support the job the planning commission and our staff and other agencies did, and I'm ready to vote.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, and we need to go through that motion for Robert's rules of order, and then there was a substitute motion for a delay, so we'll go through motion one.
Mayor and council, this is your city clerk, Jason Lindgren, just jumping in, and I do have the motion and second for the resolution to deny the appeal. What is floated out there, though, is a motion to continue the item, which is if that were to be seconded, that would actually be something that we would consider first.
The motion I heard first was from Councilmember Spees.
Indeed, for the item to motion, and I'd also look to see if I have any counterpoints to be provided by our city attorney, but this is as a procedure item. If it is continue the item to another date, if there is another member of the council that's interested in that to second that motion, but that motion would only continue if it is seconded and then voted.
I thought we vote on Councilmember Spees first, and then if it fails, then we take my continuance. But if it doesn't get the approval, then we go with Councilmember Spees' motion moves forward.
Fair enough, I think that.
Yeah, the first is the active motion came from Councilmember Spees. That was the first one for us consideration.
Yeah, Mayor, let me clarify, you're all kind of right. The motion from, first of all, Robert's rules of orders don't formally apply to us, we've never adopted them, but we sort of loosely follow the principles of those. And so the order of procedure would be, I recommend, to vote on Councilmember Spees' motion, which was seconded, if that does not, and that may end up mooting the motion to continue. I'm not hearing any particular support for the motion to continue. I'd suggest that you go ahead and make a motion or take role on the motion that is on the floor right now and second it, and then see where we go from there.
Thank you.
So with that, with the motion by Spees, second by Singh Allen for the resolution to deny the appeal and subsequent actions, and then the staff recommendation of 8.1, I will start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Now.
And Mayor Singh Al.
Aye.
And with that, we will have a 4-1 vote, and the motion will pass under item 8.1.
So that moots the second motion to continue that the matter is concluded.
All right. Easy enough. We will move on to our next item.
It'll take us on to item 8.2, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the initial study of mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Laguna Main Street project and ordinance amending the zoning map and a resolution declaring the city council's intent to amend the general plan for the project, approving a major design review and special parking permit.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Sarah Kurtz-Gussner, senior planner with Development Services Department and the Planning Division. The Laguna Main Street project consists of a general plan amendment from community commercial to residential mixed-use RMU, a rezone from limited commercial to RMU, a major design review for a 148-unit apartment complex, and a special parking permit for a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. The project proposal includes six three-story multifamily residential apartment buildings and two clubhouse, as well as a swimming pool and spa-associated eating and meeting areas, parking, landscape areas, and other. The planning commission reviewed the application on July 15. During deliberations, the planning commission discussed the requested special parking permit for reduction in the number of required parking spaces for the project. Specifically, the commission requested that the city's multifamily parking study, which is currently underway, be completed as soon as possible to better align the city's parking standards with parking demand. The planning commission voted 5-0 to recommend city council approval of the project as proposed. The project site is located in the Laguna West area of the city, on the south side of Box Avenue between East and North. Laguna Main Street runs north-south through the middle of the project site. The project site, which is currently undeveloped, is bordered by commercial development to the north, high-density residential to the west and east, and a public park and a Laguna Town Hall to the south. The general plan land plan identifies the site as community commercial. To accommodate the proposed residential uses, the applicant requests the general plan land use designation for the site to change from community commercial to residential mixed-use. Additionally, the site is proposed to be rezoned to RMU. Pursuant to Belgrade Municipal Code, multifamily dwellings are a permitted use in this zone, and the proposed density is 25.3 dwellings per acre. The project is consistent with general plan policies, including policy LU 2-1, which promotes high-density residential along transit and commercial corridors, and policy LU 2-4, which requires infill development to be compatible with rounded land uses, support transuses, and increase housing diversity. The proposed project meets the applicable development standards of the zoning code and the design guidelines with approval of the special parking permit. The main vehicular entrances are from Box Avenue and Nolan Street. The project also includes the relocation to existing bus stops adjacent to the project site to the intersection of Box Avenue and Street along with the bus stop. Here's the proposed sightland. The proposed buildings are located along the streets and pathway with the proposed parking located in the interior of the site. The buildings are located along Laguna Main Street, Box Avenue, and Front Street. The project also proposes to remove the existing tree wells on Laguna Main Street. New landscaping with trees and shrubs will be provided within the landscape board. Here are the proposed elevations. The architecture is Italian style, which includes a variety of building materials, detailing, recessed cables, roofing, as well as tile act materials. Detailing colors are carried over to all building facades. Here is a rendering of the site. The project's colors and materials are complementary to the surrounding neighborhood character, which is consistent with the requirement of the design guidelines. The special parking permit would allow for a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. The zoning code requires 293 parking stalls for the project site. The project includes 250 parking stalls, which is a 40.7% reduction. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing concrete parking on the non-residential streets adjacent to the project site. The zoning code specifically allows that on-street parking spaces can be used to meet the parking requirements with approval of the special parking permit. The applicant, pay of properties, owns and operates the retail center to the north of Box Avenue, and Michael Green, who walks these properties almost daily, he provided photographs showing the adjacent streets where parking would occur. An initial study mitigated negative declarations was prepared for the project, and the project would not result in significant environmental impacts that could not be mitigated. Mitigation measures were incorporated to reduce the potential impact to a less significant level. Six comment letters were received, and the comments do not alter the conclusion of the initial study, MMD. The planning commission recommends 5-0 that the city council take the following actions: adopt the initial study mitigated negative declaration, MMRP, for the project, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution only and ordinance amending the Elk Grove zoning map, and adopt the resolution declaring its intent to amend the general plan and approve a major design review and special parking permit for the project. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, Michael Green, as well as representatives from the architecture firm LPAS are available to ask questions, as well as Rod Stinson, the safety consultant for the project, who prepared the environmental documents, also supporting the question. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and invite the applicant, if you wish. Sarah, do we have the applicant available if they are interested in speaking?
Yes, I believe the applicant is available tonight. Michael Green, do you want to raise your hand?
So we're not actually seeing the listed individuals. They are coming through under different names. But indeed, for someone, if they're participating under a different name, what we would ask if they're the applicant for item 8.2, Mr. Michael Green, the other is Chris Kelly.
It looks like they are not on the list at this time, so I think they are not going to speak.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity then at this time.
Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, well, first, for attendees in the audience, if you are a member of the public or a member that just wishes to speak on general public comment for item 8.2, that would be that opportunity to raise your hand. Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, we received two written comments prior to the meeting on this item that circulated to the whole city council and staff. As I'm going over the list of attendees, I am not seeing any raised hand functions being utilized, and so I think that will conclude our public comment for item 8.2.
Okay, I'll close the public comment opportunity and just provide one last opportunity if the applicant has joined in the last minute, if they are available and interested in speaking.
And we haven't seen any additions on the listing.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing officially and open it up for council deliberations and directions. We will start with Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start off with saying I'm so pleased to see this project come forward. These parcels have been sitting fallow for over 20 years, and to see this project come in as it was intended, well, excuse me, the allowance to have multifamily will greatly enhance this area by providing more residents to frequent the small businesses that are right next door. So I'm really excited to see this going forward, and glad to see that we already have bus stops, that we've had those, even the relocations of those will be walking. My concern is, and this is in relation to one of the property owners who committed a green sheet, and I recognize the staff analysis of the parking permit for on-street parking that should suffice, but the concern that was raised, and I wish the applicant was on, but I guess I'll maybe pitch it to staff if there's perhaps any signage that would be effective in just ensuring that, you know, residents aren't going to misuse the parking lots and the commercial centers. And just so folks haven't read the letter, I mean, the concern is that they're already having problems there now with non-customers parking in those areas. Thanks.
Good evening. One thing to note is that the applicant for the project is also the property owner to the shopping center immediately to the north of this project site on the east side of Box Laguna Main, and they've indicated that there hasn't been any issues at all with residential parking within their commercial center. I believe that the comment letter was from the adjacent commercial center, so I don't know if you're suggesting that they install parking on the other property or within their property.
No, the tenant of that shop center was planning right, so I don't know if, you know, perhaps, you know, signs, notifying signs that, you know, it's not intended for, you know, parking or parking only for customers or that kind of thing. And again, with the applicant not here, I mean, I, you know, I hate to impose another condition on the applicant, but it also seems like an easy way to try to mitigate that concern.
I do see a hand raised at the moment that may be a representative of LPAS.
Right.
The hand just went down. I'm not sure if they're permitted to speak at this time, but.
Hi, sir. Yes, my name is Ryan Townsend, I'm with LPAS. Chris probably could not be here tonight, but yeah, I was raising my hand during the function. I just want to let you know that there is work. So, and bring all your concerns to the app, and perhaps answer any questions.
Mr. Townsend, are you able to speak on behalf of the applicant in terms of willingness to install some signs, make sure that resident, future residents don't misuse the parking lot?
I know that this was discussed at a prior meeting, and they, as was mentioned, they own the retail plaza as well, and they are not aware of any issues. But I don't know if the plaza referencing further away wouldn't really be a challenge for those particular residents to actually use that for parking. I can't speak on behalf of them for being willing to add additional signage, but.
You know what? Okay, thank you. You know, given this circumstance, I'm willing to table that we'll deal with it if an issue arises through other means, enforcement, or whatnot. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to, again, express my support for this project and for the other.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supportive of the project, I don't have any further.
Councilmembers, Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I do have a quick question. Why the proposal to remove the pocket trees out on the street?
The applicant requested the removal of those because they don't seem to be, the trees in those locations don't seem to be surviving very well, they're in poor health, the size of the planters is very small, and it would increase parking along that street.
And you concur with the, as far as the health of the trees?
Yes, it's looking at the trees in that area, they don't seem to be thriving. Additionally, they're just small, they're very small squares, and they limit parking in the area, and the increased trees on the landscape corridor would provide sufficient landscaping in that area.
Okay. That's a bummer, because that is a unique feature, and I think were those trees to mature out nicely, it provides a different aesthetic to the whole feel of the street state. Aside from that, I have no question.
Vice Mayor Wen.
All right, couldn't do it fast enough. No questions, I support the project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have some comments. I did read through the letter from Elk Grove Unified School District, and as a former trustee, I understand the frustration from the school district's point of view in that, you know, schools can't be built fast enough to keep up with all of the demands, and it creates that sort of overcrowding that we see in schools and children having to go to different schools away from their own neighborhood school. So this is an ongoing challenge that the school district has, but I do know that they're working with the state to get additional funding to construct new school facilities. But I wanted to acknowledge that I did read that letter, particularly as a former trustee. I do understand the challenges the district faces as it relates to providing adequate facilities for our students, but I think that this is a great project. We clearly continue to have a great need for a variety of housing options, and this provides yet one more opportunity to live in Elk Grove for our companies, so I enthusiastically also support it. I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move motion one to adopt the resolution.
I can.
We have a motion in a second.
And with the motion in a second, for motion one of the staff recommendation under item 8.2, I'll start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Council- Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Motion one will pass five oh.
All right, motion two.
Motion two, introducing wave the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance providing a rezone for the Laguna Main Street Apartments Project PLNG one nine dash zero four seven. That's a parcel number one one nine dash one 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 zero dash zero zero nine, one one nine dash one 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 zero dash zero one zero. One one nine dash one 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 zero dash zero one three and one one nine dash one 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 zero dash zero one four.
Wow, that was a mouthful.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And that's for the ordinance of motion number two, the staff recommendation, starting with that roll call vote. It will go to Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of motion two will pass five oh.
And motion three.
Motion three.
Second.
And with the motion, the second for motion three of item eight point two, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And motion three will pass five oh for the resolution of item eight point two.
All right, thank you. We will go on to our next item.
Will take us to item eight point three, which is a public hearing to consider actions approving a consolidated general plan amendment for previously approved projects Sheldon Grove. General Plan Zoning Consistency Phase Three, Espinade West Subdivision and Susidary Development Agreement Amendment, and Laguna Main Street Apartments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers Christopher Jordan. Uh, this item, as Jason mentioned, is your consolidated general plan amendment number three for the year. As the council is aware, state law limits us to four general plan amendments every calendar year, so we do consolidate these into um up to four items per year where we can. Um, the item before you this evening will address four projects that you've previously seen. First, the Sheldon Grove project that was adopted or approved uh back on June twenty third. The general plan zoning consistency phase three project, which you saw at your July twenty eighth council meeting. The Espinade West and Susidary Development Project, which you saw at your special council meeting last week on August fourth, and the prior agenda item for Laguna Main Street Apartments. Um, no further environmental reviews required for these items, as noted in the staff report that was previously considered with their project reviews on those prior dates. Uh, and with that, the resolution for general plan amendment for amendment number three for twenty twenty one is available for your consideration. concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer questions.
All right, thank you, Christopher. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Open the public comment opportunity.
And I was muted, so I will say for our attendees, uh, now's your opportunity to use the raised hand function. I do see a hand uh being raised for that. Uh, in the meantime, we'll give some other folks an opportunity to queue up. But Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting for item eight point three, and so I will pull up that speaker timer and move in speakers.
Matt Kiesling, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Matt Kiesling on behalf of Sheldon Grove. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can hear you, Matt.
Good evening. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you once again to Sarah Kirchner and Antonio Avlog, as well as Christopher Jordan for the work they put on it in on Sheldon Grove. And thank you all for the time you spent on it. Um, it sounds like there has been strong support for all four of the projects moving forward, and we'd like to support staff's recommendation to approve the general plan amendment. And thank you all for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you for calling in. Do we have any other speakers?
And I do not see the raised hand function from any of our other attendees in this environment. That would conclude public comment for item eight point three.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. And open it up for council direction and comment. We will.
Or should we adopt the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of item eight point three, I will start that roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item eight point three will pass five oh.
All right, thank you. Moving on, um, next item.
And item eight point four is actually six public hearings. Um, and they are going to start with the fifty-fifth annexation of Community Facilities District two thousand three dash two for police services. And we will have the sixty-ninth and seventieth annexations to CFD two thousand six dash one. The eighth annexation to Street Maintenance District is in one zone two H, the second annexation to Street Maintenance District Zone five S, and the forty-fourth annexation to Stormwater Drainage V Zone two.
Jason, is my audio and presentation coming okay?
Yeah, you have the PowerPoint up, but it's still in that design mode. If you want to hit slideshow, but your audio is coming through clear, and there you go. Please continue.
Great, thank you. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the City. I'm here again this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's. Um, familiar slide, I'm sure. Um, the city maintains eight special tax districts. Which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as for police maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are to be part of a new development project approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to geographic location and building you. Um, special taxes are subject to annual rate. Um, on June twenty third, twenty twenty one, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the Sheldon Farms North Project. And for the Fortune Charter School Project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts. CFD thousand three dash two for public safety services. CFD two thousand six dash one for maintenance services throughout the city. Street Maintenance District Number One Zone Two and Five for local collection and art studio street maintenance. And Stormwater Drainage V Zone Two for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance services. These represent the fifty-fifth, fifty-fifth annexation to CFD two thousand three dash two, the sixty-ninth and seventieth annexations. Into CFD two thousand six dash one, the eighth annexation into Street Maintenance District One Zone Two, the twenty-second annexation into Street Maintenance District One Zone Five. And the forty-fourth annexation into the Stormwater Drainage V Zone. All of these assessments will be levied. Um, more specifically about each of the projects, the first project proposed um for annexation is Sheldon Farms North. The project consists of three hundred and ninety-one single-family residential units, approximately one hundred and thirty-three multi-family residential units. And approximately five non-residential acres located at the northern boundary of the city, southeast of Sheldon and Bruceville Road. And then the second um project is Fortune is Fortune Charter School. The project consists of approximately nine non-residential acres located towards the southern boundary of the city, southwest of Billby and McMillan Road. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm available for any.
Thank you for that. I will declare, let's see, we've got several here, so I will declare the public hearing for CFD. Two zero zero three dash two open and open the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, for item eight point four, um, though we have six public hearings, we just as a blanket statement, we did not receive any um prior written public comments on any of these annexations. Um, and I'm gonna look to the attendee list, um, but this would be for any public comment for eight point four. We will open up opportunities. But I think the listing of folks that are here on our attendee list will go pretty briefly through any future um requests for public comment. But please do use that raised hand function if you have anything you want to wish to chime in on for item eight point four. But that would conclude public comment for our first of our public hearings for CFD two thousand three dash uh two.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero three dash two is now closed. And entertain a motion for A one.
Question A one.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
I rolled all vote for resolution of A one. I will start with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of A one passes five oh.
All right, I would like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Indeed, of five hundred and twenty-four possible votes, five hundred and twenty-four affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax to the rate of portion and described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Thank you for that. Uh, motion A two.
Question A two.
Second.
And with the motion and the second on A two, that roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
A two, the resolution will pass five oh.
All right, uh, motion A three.
Question A three, introducing wave the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed. Community Facilities District Number two thousand three dash two, Police Services Annexation Number Fifty Five, Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three point one eight point zero one zero.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the ordinance of A three, I will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of motion A three passes five oh.
All right, we have our second public hearing, CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex sixty-nine. I will declare the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex nine, open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments, and from our list of attendees, it hasn't changed, and nobody's raised their hands. That'll conclude public comment for Annex sixty-nine, two thousand dash one.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex sixty-nine is now closed. And entertain a motion for B one. Motion one.
B one.
Second.
And with the motion, the second for the resolution of B one, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of B one passes five oh.
All right, I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of five hundred and twenty-nine possible votes, five hundred and twenty-nine affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax to the rate of portion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Move that resolution, B two.
Second.
For a motion in a second for B two.
And that roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of B two will pass five oh.
All right, motion for B three.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax territory annexed to Community Facilities District. Number two thousand six dash one, Annexation Number Sixty-nine, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three dot one nine dot zero one.
Second.
And with the motion and the second on the ordinance of motion B three, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of B three passes five oh.
All right, our third public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex seventy. I'd like to declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex seventy is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments. Our attendee list has not changed, and I do not see any changes in the status of raised hands. That'll conclude public comment for third public hearing Annex seventy six dash one.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one, Annex seventy is now closed. And entertain a motion for C one.
Move C one.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of C one, I will start the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Member Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of C one will pass five oh.
All right, uh, I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
And for the seventieth annexation of ten possible votes, ten affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax to the rate of portion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right.
Move C two.
Second.
With the motion and the second for the resolution of C two, that roll call vote will start with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of C two will pass five oh.
All right, motion C three.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax territory annexed. Community Facilities District Number two thousand six dash one, Annexation Number Seventy, Amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three dot one nine dot.
Second.
With the motion and the second on the ordinance of motion C three, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Ordinance of motion C three will pass five oh.
All right, we are on our fourth public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMB two dash eight, Annex eight now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments for this public hearing, and our attendee list remains the same with no hands raised. That'll conclude public comment for SMD two H Annex eight.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMB two dash eight, Annex eight is now closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of five hundred and twenty-four possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, five hundred and twenty-four affirmative affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Move motion D.
Second.
And with the motion and the second for the resolution of motion D, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion D will pass five oh.
All right, on to our fifth public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMB five dash S Annex twenty-two now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no prior written comments. Our attendee list stays the same, and no raised hand functions have uh been triggered, so we're uh concluding our public comment opportunity for SMD five S Annex twenty-two.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SMD five dash S Annex twenty-two is now closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of ten possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the property. Ten affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. The resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Move motion E.
Second.
With a motion and a second for the resolution of motion E, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion E will pass five oh.
All right, on to our sixth public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SWDF two Annex forty-four open and open the public comment opportunity.
And to conclude, still no written comments that were received, and none of our attendees um are raising hands for this last item. That'll conclude the public comment for SWDF two Annex forty-four.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF two Annex forty-four is closed. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation. And request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of 529 possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property, 529 affirmative votes for return. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion F.
What was that?
That was me. He beat me to the punch. The last motion.
And with the motion and the second for the resolution of motion F, we will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion F will pass, 5-0. Thank you everyone for moving through the procedural items to do those votes.
That was a lot. All right, um, on to the next item.
That'll take us on to section nine, our regular action item and recommendation, where there is only one item, it is item 9.1, consider a resolution to execute a consultant contract. Start on commercial real estate for development advisory consulting services for project Elevate, amending fiscal year 2021, 22 budget.
Bring up my presentation here. There we go. Does everybody see PowerPoint? Perfect. Let's start it. There we go. Uh, good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. Um, my name is Rachel Brown. I'm your economic development manager here at the city. Um, I'm here to talk to you about project Elevate and hiring a consultant to assist us with finding a developer. So briefly, I'd like to do a little bit of background on project Elevate. Uh, city-owned property just north of our District 56 campus off of Oak Grove Boulevard. Um, city staff has been looking at development opportunities for this site. And we've been envisioning a urban mixed-use district that would include uses such as retail, dining, entertainment, office, residential, as well as a hotel. And, uh, last year, uh, I guess years ago in August 2019, uh, the city hired ELS to help kind of put a vision together. Um, so that we could have something to look at and get qualified people to help us out with the project. Um, we brought those, uh, design concepts to you in August of 2020. Uh, and council at the time, we're in the midst of the pandemic, but hey, why don't you guys wait and see how, how the pandemic treats our community and the, um, economy. But keep an eye out and should you find qualified, uh, folks that are interested in the project, go ahead and proceed with having this discussion. Um, just as a quick recap on those nine concepts, there's a few of the renderings that came out of the ELS work. Um, this is a rendering of the aerial view looking south from Elk Grove Boulevard. You kind of see in the central space there, these, uh, very well-planned clauses space that we think would be great. For the community to enjoy, uh, lots of fun events we, we could see happening there with some office on the, on the left and potentially on the right. Uh, here's another view, uh, from the current District 56 about above the Aquatics Center area, uh, looking north. And you could see we've kind of identified a potential hotel location there as well as the multifamily on the left-hand side of your screen. And then a little bit of a close-up, a ground, uh, view of the aerial, or sorry, ground view of the, the green plaza space that we see as being a gathering spot for folks. So here's the vision we had, um, that, that council saw in August last year. Um, and so what had happened over the last several months, August of 2020 is, uh, we've had continued interest by, um, various developers. And so with the continued interest, we thought we needed to find, um, a partner who could assist us with, um, realizing our, the council's vision and bringing this project to life. Uh, we realized that we probably needed some expertise in the way of real estate. Uh, we met with a few different firms and we found that Turton Commercial, uh, real estate seemed like a really good fit. They believed in the vision the city council had adopted. Um, they have extensive resume experience with helping local governments with projects like this. Um, they're not only a real estate broker, uh, they deal with development. They're an owner and they have a lot of advisory experience that they offer. Uh, they're a local group out of the Sacramento area. Uh, and so we just thought, let's continue to have these discussions with them, see if they're interested in partnering with us. And that's why we're here tonight to discuss this. Um, so real quickly, the key terms, um, that we've identified with certain commercial. Um, the term, we think it could take less than 24 months, but just to make sure to give us ample time to do what we need to do. Uh, 24 months is the term of the contract. The amount over the two-year period is a not-to-exceed amount of 300,000. Um, the scope of work you can see here, um, starts with reviewing all the work we've done to date. Um, helping us, uh, go out, find qualified developers, let those developers truly make sure we position the property in a way that, um, you know, encapsulates the value that we think that land has and bring forward a project that the community will enjoy. Um, so there's lots of bullets here, but, uh, we feel it's pretty expensive and it's going to get us to where we want to be, which is finding a qualified developer and constructing the project. Alternative actions, real quick, alternative one, um, city council could decline to authorize the contract, in which case we'd try to find another path forward as to how to, uh, develop the project without potentially a partner. Um, alternative two, we could conduct a formal competitive proposal process, which would delay, uh, starting finding the qualified developer. But quite frankly, I think we feel that, uh, we're not going to have a more qualified firm that's going to come forward, in our opinion. Um, so I don't recommend that one either. Uh, so in terms of fiscal impact for this contract, um, economic development currently has $30,000 in our budget this year. As part of tonight's agenda item, we're requesting an amendment, uh, for the unbudgeted portion of the work that'll occur this fiscal year. As I mentioned, the contract will cover a two-year, uh, time period. So we're asking an amendment for $150,000 for this year's, uh, fiscal budget. And then for the, uh, next fiscal year, we will identify the appropriate amount in our overall economic development budget. Um, as a side note, I would like to mention that, um, this kind of work might typically, um, have a brokerage fee of about 4%. With the value of the land, we think that that could be, uh, around 400 to 600,000 if this is the standard commissionable event. Point there. So this is the technical, um, component in terms of the resolution. Uh, dispensing with the formal request for proposal procedures, authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant contract. Um, for 24 months, not to exceed 300,000 and amending the fiscal year 21, 22 budget by 150,000. Um, I did neglect to mention at the beginning of my presentation that, uh, we have representatives from Turton Commercial Real Estate on the line. Uh, Ken Turton, who's president, is, is on the line, Scott Kingston, who's a vice president, and also Patrick Delmott. Uh, and so with that short presentation, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And as I mentioned, Turton's on the line. Should you have any questions for them?
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your presentation. I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the audience, I think most of the folks are the, um, the representatives for item 9.1. Um, but now would be the opportunity, if you do have public comment for any of our participants, if wish to raise their hand as general public comment. That would be that opportunity. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, there were no written comments received for item 9.1 prior to the council meeting. And as I'm looking over our list of attendees, I think it is just our representatives from, uh, for item nine in the attendee audience at this time. That concludes public comment for 9.1.
All right, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council comment. Um, let's see, we will start with Councilmember Spies.
Ooh, lucky me. Okay, um, so let me start off with, I, I, I want to make sure you understand that I support, um, this item. Um, but I have some general issues with the contract. And so, uh, I'm going to beg my, uh, my peers' patience in this one and, and ask, of course, that, uh, um, staff. Um, I read this late and I apologize to you. I would have sent these questions prior. Um, but first, so I want to know which city employee is going to provide oversight?
I think economic development as a team is going to, um, I mean, I'm sure I'll be heavily involved, well as Daryl. Uh, but we're going to team up and make sure that economic development runs point, I think.
Okay, um, so, so this, this might, um, go towards Jonathan, but so getting into the contract, right? It says paragraph, on paragraph four, in part, compensation states consultant will be paid monthly as set forth in exhibit C. And then at further states, said amount shall be paid upon submittal of a monthly invoice. So if we roll down to, uh, exhibit C, uh, it says that the consultant will be paid at the end of each phase. And not until completed until the satisfaction of the city. So if you go to exhibit, um, which one is which? Um, but what you'll notice in the phases is that they don't, um, they don't go to a, uh, you know, a phase per month. So it seems to me that paragraph four is in, um, is in contrast to exhibit C. And so I'm perfectly fine with exhibit C, but I think we should amend, um, paragraph four.
Councilmember Spies, let me address that. Um, so paragraph four is part of our standard template. Exhibit C will trump paragraph four. So if they send monthly invoices as a result of work that has not yet been completed for which they'd be entitled to payment. And for instance, if they have not completed a phase, then that monthly invoice will not have any payment due. However, your point is well taken. We can certainly clear that up. The intent is that the, they get paid at the completion of phases, period. Exhibit C will govern. As a matter of contract law, the more specific exhibits like that would govern anyways, um, but we'll clean that up. That's not a problem.
Perfect, okay. Um, so then, um, paragraph four B states that the performance is not inconformity, payments will be delayed or denied. And then it also says that if the work is halted at the request of the city, compensation will be based on the proportion of work performed. Um, so, let's see, uh, ah, okay, but I want to read the other part. Uh, paragraph 11A states in part that the contract may be terminated by the city. Upon termination, the city shall be entitled to all work, including but not limited to reports, investigation, et cetera, whether completed or not. And then 11D again states the same, and then 15A goes further to the property of the city, right? So I guess what I'm, I'm curious in, um, is what are the deliverables of this contract? Because what, when I look through the phases, there's a lot of thought, thinking and analysis, right? But there isn't, um, much, right, um, detailed in the way of deliverable. So, um, so perhaps we should state them in the contract, right? Perhaps we should request delivery, delivery of the deliverables at the conclusion of each phase. And if there's truly no deliverable that can be provided to the city at the conclusion of each phase, perhaps we should ask for some kind of documentation on the results of that thing. Um, so as some of these, again, as some of these, uh, phases, um, extend more than a month, I think it's appropriate, um, to ask for a monthly support, uh, monthly status report. Um, so I'll pause there, but I, I guess maybe what I'll, you know, what I can do is, oh, no. I'll add this one in, right? So, um, exhibit B, phase nine, escrow management is a six, 12-month phase, right? And it essentially, um, it's saying to manage all es- aspects of escrow to ensure a successful close. Now, I hope it closes. I swear, I do. That's what I want. But what if it doesn't? Does the city owe the consultant that last payment of 30,000? So I, I'm okay with approving this tonight as long as the deliveries are clearly defined. The deliveries are given to the city at the completion of each phase. And where a phase doesn't specifically create an artifact as an outcome, some type of report is produced to sum up the activities performed during that phase. And then monthly status reports should be required, provide some clarity, um, to the completion of phase nine. I mean, you know, they do work, right? Whether it closes or not, they might be, they might be well deserving of, of, of funding, right? And then, of course, as you mentioned, you can de-conflict paragraph four with exhibit C, so I kind of put a big chunk on you. Mr. Hobbs?
Ms. Brown, or yeah, Mr. Hobbs, and I, I'm going to invite Ms. Brown and then even, um, Turton. Um, to perhaps respond to their areas.
Sure. Councilmember Spies, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, let me address some of the legal aspects, some of the nuts and bolts of the contract. I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Brown. Uh, I made a couple of notes there, Councilmember Spies, let me see if I can address those. Uh, so with respect to, let's move to, for instance, escrow management phase nine. That reads manage all aspects of escrow to ensure a successful closing. That's the only, that's the entirety of that phase. But to your point, would they get paid if it didn't close? Under the language of this contract, I would, no, they wouldn't because you would not have a successful closing. Um, and so that would be a requirement for completing that phase. To your point about having monthly reports, uh, uh, a man, monthly status reports and a report at the end of each phase if there was not a firm deliverable. Um, that's not expressed in the contract, but I think that's a very reasonable term if that's what the council wants to in- uh, inject into the contract. Um, assuming that the vendor doesn't have an objection to that. Um, I think one of your other questions, if I wrote down my notes correctly, is if work is halted, the, um, vendor can receive a proportion of the work. That's a standard clause we put in our contracts to essentially, um, uh, bring about equity. If, let's say hypothetically, they have completed 90% of particular phase, and there's really no dispute on that. And we say, yeah, we, we've decided we don't want to do this anymore. It's a little unfair to not have them receive a portion of that. But that's at, at the discretion of the city as to what proportion that is. If we decide to terminate the contract, it's sort of a, um, an equitable fairness type of principle, uh, that we put in our contracts as part of a standard term. Uh, I think that was the highlights of your points. Did I miss anything?
But I don't, I don't disagree with what you're stating, right? But what, what you're saying is that a lot, there's, again, there's a lot of mental work going on, right? Analyze, uh, look at, or I haven't looked, I mean, I don't remember the specific language right now. But what I'm saying is if you don't have documentation at the completion of each phase, right? Then how, uh, is, are they to deliver something to you from which there is no neat, no, no, uh, documentation produced, right?
I, I, I understand your point in this. I think I do. And that's, uh, goes to your suggestion at the end of each phase that they have a report that would be, uh, to the satisfaction of the city. And that would be a deliverable. You're right, there's a lot of analysis, a lot of sort of thinking work here that might not necessarily in and of itself generate a deliverable. So I think you're suggesting, Councilmember Spies, is at the end of each phase, you shall give us a document justifying what you did during that phase before you get paid. Is that what you're asking for?
Only in those instances where there isn't a deliverable that would support it, right? So again, phase one, right, there's a number of documents where, where at the conclusion, they are supposed to provide, uh, changes at the direction of the city, right? Each of those items would then, you know, an, an edited or revised document would be a deliverable, right? You could say, right, at the discretion of the city, of course, right? So that's one phase where you could say, well, that's, you know, you're, you have a specific deliverable for it, right? Or specific deliverables. But if it's something where you say, uh, we're going to market this and we're going to go out and we're going to talk to people and we're going to do something nebulous, right? There, there should be something that says, I want to know who you talk to. I want to know what times you talk to them. I want to know what their phone number is. I want to know, you know, what their address is. I, I want to know what the nature of the conversation, right? Um, and, and I'm, and I'm not being, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to drive specifically what it is. I'm asking for us to kind of put some sort of, uh, deliverable to each of those. So as the phases go along, there isn't, so one that is fair to the, um, to the consultant, right? Because you have some objective conversation about have they delivered a product, do we have, so it's, it's that. But in the event that the, the, the project doesn't work out, along the way, you have received documentation, right? So you don't have to go back and argue it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it, it does. Uh, and, and we can, we can implement that. So for, for matters that don't have specific deliverables, for instance, we will, will require that, assuming that's the will of the council, I suspect it probably will be. Uh, and include the report for each phase and, and keep in mind, of course, council and councilmember Spies, all of this would be to the satisfaction of the city. And so if we had issues or concerns, uh, with the performance, then that could impact, uh, payment to the, to the consultant.
Sure, a- and, and I'm just being sure that we're fair to both sides, right, is what is to the satisfaction of the city. We ought to define that clearly before, you know, we go into the contract. So that when we say, well, this is not our satisfaction, right? What is satisfaction? What is, what is that definition? What is, what is that definition? I mean, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Don looks like he wants to say something.
Before he does, to answer your question, councilmember Spees, if you don't mind, mayor, to answer your question, councilmember Spees, the way contracts are interpreted generally in this one specifically, it would be to the reasonable satisfaction of the city, given the industry standards. Now, that may not inform the conclusion as precise as you might like, and if you'd like more precision in there, we can certainly work on that. But it's always going to be, it's not going to be to the arbitrary satisfaction of the city, for lack of a better term. We, we have an obligation to be reasonable.
And, and that's fair, so long as both parties understand. And again, I'm not, I'm not picking on this because I have a problem with this. I'm picking on this because I live this, right?
And you don't want to have a problem.
Yeah, I know, I live this life as a consultant, right? So I'm, I'm trying to help both sides. So, but I, also, there are, there are phases wherein they are more than one month, right? So like, the last one is six to 12 months. So what I would be suggesting is that there is a monthly status.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's not a problem. Require that, John. Add that length of contract. I'm sure we can do that. And I am certain that Burton would be amenable to doing that and providing those written reports.
Right. And, and I think those are all my concerns, like I said in the beginning. Oh, but no, I'm not ready yet. So what I would, what I would suggest is that you go back through each of the phases and try to determine a reasonable deliverable. So for instance, you know, in the marketing, right, where you talk about, you know, marketing slicks and maybe social media and all that stuff, what you want to do is you want to ask for those, you know, for, for the artwork from those, right? So that as you go through phases, you don't have to go back and, and fight, you know, if you get into phase seven and there's an issue, you don't want to go back and fight for documentation in phase five, right?
Councilman, a lot of the deliverables here, you're right. This is, this is a mix of sweat equity, intellect, and physical deliverable. That, that's, that's what the work entails. And so we will be, we're not just going to release this contract and sit back and wait, right? There's going to be regular status meetings taking place weekly. And so if artwork needs to be developed for a marketing component of this, that won't go forward until we've reviewed it and approved. But we'll be, we'll be seeing work product all along the way doing that. Staff will have a complete sense of whether each phase has been successfully completed. In addition to that, like I said, I'm, I'm fine with asking Burton to provide phase by phase written status reports for the record, even if there is some kind of a dispute. I mean, Scott or Ken can weigh in, but I don't think they would have any issue with the content. This is sort of an iterative process, and, you know, ultimately, success is going to be defined as whether we attract a successful master developer who, you know, consummates a purchase of the product.
Absolutely. And, and with that goal in mind, I certainly understand that. What I'm telling you is from my life on the daily, this is a protection for the, for both sides. And so what I'm suggesting is that, you know, and I, and I understand, yes, we have to approve the, the artwork or the message or whatever. What I'm suggesting is that you want to make sure that you have the final, and you have all the artwork for the final, right? That's, that's it. I'm not mad at anybody, I'm not trying to push anybody, I'm trying to help everybody. That's it. So I think I'm, I'm good as, and so that's, my point is, as well, I mean, I'm happy to approve this tonight as long as you can go back and work those things tomorrow.
I'm going to invite Burton just to provide additional, if you want to write any comments before we go on. Councilmember Spees addressed a number of issues.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I, you know, I, I totally, well, first, I just want to say we're very excited about the project. These discussions have been, you know, going on for a couple of months. It's, what we do, it's just the first time we're doing it contractually the way that we're doing it. So there's a little bit of, you know, that it'll be, it'll be, you know, it'll be good for, I think, both sides, you know, to do it this way. It'll be good for the city of Elk Grove and for rural state to add it to our methodology for helping counties and cities. We represent the state of Davis, the state of Sacramento, the county of Alton City, hopefully the state of Elk Grove, county of Sutter, county of Eldorado, county of Placer, and a lot of other public agencies. And this is a unique way of doing this process. And I think it'll be great to be able to add it to our, 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 as a mechanism for getting public projects done. And this is really a, a, a project we're looking forward to working on. And I completely respect what councilmember Spees is saying. And I agree with him that I think it's a, a great way to protect the vendor and also protect county. And that is one of our first and foremost objectives anytime we work with a public agency like a county or a city. We, you know, everything we do, normally we're paid when the, you know, as a commissionable event, when, when the, when the transaction is ultimately completed, probably, obviously 98th time of work on these different projects. But during the course of the process, every single thing we do is designed to protect the client from, you know, in, in the perspective of their constituents and optics. Because everything needs to be, you know, everything needs to be done with the public's interest at heart. That's who you represent, that's who we represent, Black List, you, and we understand that. So by doing, by, by completing the process the way councilmember Spees is suggesting, I think you accomplish that goal. So we're all for it. If we haven't done it this way, usually we're just paid on the final process. And we're looking forward to meeting the councilmembers, kind of talk, you know, talking about some of the projects that are done. You're watching one get done right now, the Business Journal, if you're following the 16th Street project, I don't know if any of you have been down 16th Street in Sacramento as you enter onto Highway 160, but if you do, and you go past North C Street, you'll see where Pipe Works is. You know, it's a, there's a, there's a section there of about probably 40, 50 acres of land that is inundated with, with the homeless, really blighted real estate projects. We're bringing in a developer. We just closed on about 15 acres, 16 acres worth of, 18 acres worth of land, and at a, you know, a pricing, you know, around $15 million total. And that was a commissionable event in excess of $300,000. Completely different type of project than what we're going to be doing with the state of Elk Grove. But the end result really won't be, because it'll be a destination location mixed with huge retail stores, you know, architectural real estate in the entire region. And it's going to be a transformational project that, that very, very, very huge real estate firms pull off. And we did it. You know, we brought in the, we brought it, we, you know, we're, we're at the 25-yard line, we still have 75 yards to go to get it done. Those first 25 yards were really, really difficult. We started on the one-yard line, our whole line. And the developer has closed escrow, he has, and it's an opportunity zone, he has three years to complete the project by the terms of the opportunity zone. And so we're just really excited about that project. This, this project in Elk Grove is equally exciting for us. We see it as a completely transformational, a project for Elk Grove, destination location, and something that's going to be really special that everybody involved would be back on 10, 20, 25 yards from Elk Grove and say, I was part of it. And so doing what you're asking for, councilmember Spees, absolutely no problem, we'll, we'll work it out with the city and make sure that you have deliverables at each, at the end of each phase to, to make sure that everybody's protected in the process.
Fantastic. Thanks. And, and make sure that we clean up phase nine, because the end, the end gate is not terribly definitive. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Burton, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, councilmember Spees. I think setting expectations on both sides is important, particularly as we protect public dollars. So her comments were very welcome. We will go on to councilmembers soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And personally, I'm, I'm very pleased to see this move forward. I'm glad to see Burton potentially getting signed up here. Appreciate councilmember Spees's comments. I also understand there's a little bit of uncertainty with these things, can't always guarantee timing, but I think it's good to try to have some milestones to do before. And I, I'm really pleased to hear Mr. Burton press or recognize how special this project is. This is going to be transformational. I've, I've really been, you know, as part of the economic development committee with Councilmember Hume and the rest of the, the council, we've been pushing this for, for years now, and several years. And so to see this, you know, starting to take shape, and it's just really exciting, and we got to get the right partner. So I'm really looking forward to sitting down with certain folks and, and talking about our vision, coming to a shared vision, and looking forward to getting, getting the right partner. Thank you very much. Very supportive of this project, of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank councilmember Spees for bringing up all of those items and the context in which he did it. You know, I mean, there's a lot about this process that is nebulous idiosyncrasies, and to some extent, the way it's structured, it almost is like having this firm on retainer, rather than necessarily producing tangible work product in a quantifiable step. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that was raised, and it was, like, you know, he wasn't just wrapped around the axle on an abstract, you know, as he said, this, this is something that he's had to deal with, and it protects both sides. So thank you for looking out for public monies and for the process to be sure that at the end of it, there, there is something to show for the expenditure. You know, and as, I believe that was Mr. Burton on the line there, but, you know, as he said, usually these are set up as, you know, commissionable balloon payments, if you will. The carrot is dangled out towards, to the end of the process and not meted out as we go along. But I, I got to imagine that knowing how successful Burton is in their track record of success and everything that they've done in the region and beyond, you know, this is an important feather in their cap as well. And so not only for the clients that they court and that they represent, or their, their overall portfolio of work, but as, as councilmember Soon said, this is transformational for the city of Elk Grove. And to the extent that they can be a part of it, they, they truly have made an impact for a legacy project for a community. So the only thing about tonight's discussion that disappoints me is that there are currently only four attendees participating, and three of them are named Scott Kingston, apparently. So, you know, this is exciting stuff, and, and someday, as was mentioned, everybody's going to go look back and this will just have always been there. And there won't be the realization of some of these, you know, heavy decisions that had to be made along the way that unfortunately get made without a lot of fanfare, but hopefully will bear tremendous fruit. So I am excited about the, the, the prospect. I know that Burton is excited about it. They were instrumental in getting Dust Bowl to come to town, so that, you know, they've already, I think, borne fruit for the city. So I would move the item, but I'd look forward to the vice mayor and the mayor's comment as well.
Thank you. We do have a motion, we'll continue on with Vice Mayor Win.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to go back to councilmember Spees's comments, and my camera won't turn on anymore, and address them all one by one. I'm just kidding. Councilmember Spees, thank you so much for bringing all that to our attention and explaining in a way in which we understand, especially since this is what you do every day. And then I, I want to thank Mr. Burton for bringing and acknowledging that this is the right direction. I won't take up too much time, but I'll second that motion, and I, I look forward to this. I'm really excited about Project Elevate, and I think about it all the time. Every time I hear about it, it really gets me excited about what's to come, and so I look forward to hearing more and seeing more on this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Yeah, Project Elevate is going to transform our city, so I'm very excited, and I have tremendous respect for the company. And councilmember Spees, like I said earlier, your comments were on point, particularly as it relates to protecting public dollars and creating accountability from both sides, the city and the consultant. I have, I have two general questions that have nothing to do with really the expertise of the firm, all of that, I, I agree with all of that. So Ms. Brown, just two general questions, so that I can sort of close the loop in my head in terms of procedural. What triggers an RFP, generally speaking, so that you're, I know why you're recommending this consulting firm, but what triggered really, is there, procedurally, has this been done in the past, you know, with the mindset, you know, as someone coming new to this team? And, you know, with all due respect, I understand the expertise, the value of the firm, so none of, all, all of that withstanding, just what, what in your mind triggers an RFP? What, what, where would that have come into play at all?
We actually, in November, pull it up real quick, it was, I have it open here. In November 2019, we did informal requests for proposals for financial advisory and developer selection consulting services. And so at the time, it was pre-COVID, we didn't make a selection at the time, we thought, ah, let's kind of sit and wait. I, I also think that ELS work hadn't yet come to council, because that came forward in August of last year. And so then, you know, as our discussion with Burton began, we kind of dusted off some of these other ones and compared, so Burton was technically the fourth. And so it, I think it's dispensation of the formal RFP process, but we did an informal RFP process.
Okay, yeah, that's good to hear. So you, you have looked at other proposals and done your own compare and contrast and feel comfortable, obviously bringing this to us, but you, but prior to that, you have looked at others, so that you're bringing us the best, best firm forward?
Correct.
Okay. And then my last question, again, going on a more procedural level, in terms of the competitiveness in that $300,000, where does that number come? The 300,000 is, it was, if we didn't do an RFP, the RFP, how do we know that that's the competitive number benchmark, based on previous discussions?
Well, one of the challenges is the other firms that had submitted proposals weren't real estate firms, they're more on, heavy on the financial qualifications. And so what we're getting with Burton is kind of a, a unique set of qualifications in that they have the real estate side with the brokerage, but they also have the ability to look at the financials and evaluate work we've done to date, make sure, and look at qualified developers, building costs. One of the things we really need help with is how much will the project cost to construct? Are we got this right? And so the 300,000 was something that we negotiated with Burton compared to, as Ken mentioned, Mr. Burton mentioned earlier, is that they usually are commissionable events, and so they get paid at the end. And so you would try to forecast what that amount would be based on the sale of the property. And so we did less than that, we're just kind of talking back and forth about what's a reasonable amount, were you to be our consultant, which is what we're asking for tonight? And, and basically, it is kind of, as Mr. Hume suggested, kind of a retainer of sorts, because they typically work on a commission at the end of the deal, whereas we're saying, hey, just, we want your advice all along the way, your technical expertise, helping us get these qualified developers to the table in a way that's kind of more from the private realm instead of the public realm? So we, so we really land a good project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. Mr. Don, did you have anything to add? I saw your camera come up.
If you're satisfied.
Yeah, I'm satisfied unless you think I missed something. Yeah, I want to thank Burton for, of course, Dust Bowl, which is going to be a tremendous asset for our community, and look forward to all the good that you'll... asset for our community, and look forward to all the good that you'll be able to help us with here with Project Elevate. I just wanted to get greater understanding for those two questions. But other than that, I'm very excited about it. Looks like we have a motion and a second on the table, so we are ready for our roll call.
For that roll call vote for the resolution of Item 9.1, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
and Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of Item 9.1 will pass. Five-oh.
All right. Thank you. We're on to our next item.
I'll take us to Section 10, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
All right. Any reports from you, Councilmembers Spees, or comments, future agenda items?
Oh, other than SDA tomorrow, and I believe Library tomorrow following. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right. Councilmember Hume.
I missed an RT meeting because I was out of town and had no internet connection. And so other than that, there's another meetings. They've all been canceled, so nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Soon.
We had a Transportation Committee meeting for STACOG. Nothing to report, although there was a briefing on the regional trail plan. Trail is included in that. We, Councilmember Hume and I had a Affordable Housing Committee meeting today, and so we'll be bringing forward projects. Well, we got one more meeting to go, but potentially a couple of more, couple of projects going forth for the council. And then I'll, I'll wave.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wynn.
Councilmember Hume, you did not miss the RT meeting because I believe that meeting was canceled, the one that was on the night. But, you know, you're safe on that. I have nothing else to report.
All right. Excellent. My own report, there's meetings this week, just closing comments, National Night Out. I had the great pleasure of visiting, I think it was four or five sites. I'm forgetting the exact number with Vice Mayor Wynn. And I saw some of you out at various communities. So it was just a great opportunity to connect law enforcement with our community and being able to be supportive of those great efforts. It was a lot of fun, so look for, looking forward to that again next year. Councilmember Spees, your camera just came back on. Did you want to say something else?
My camera's been on.
Oh, OK. It just popped up on my screen for some reason. All right.
Probably because I was making noise and I forgot to mute out. Sorry.
All right. No worries, no worries. Well, with nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. It is now 9:29. Have a great evening, everybody. Stay safe.
Yeah, everybody. Thank you. All right.